Call the meeting in order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Raschowski.
There.
Mayor Pecoff.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And real quick, I also want to point out, thank you to the Police Department for getting this all set up. I know this is temporary as we reconstruct or have renovations on the village boardroom, so, thank you.
Approval of the October 3, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of October 3, 2022.
Second.
Questions, comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Accounts payable approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from October 4, 2022 through October 17, 2022 in the amount of $7,598,224.43.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Item A, payroll approval. Item B, donation of public works vehicle to Orland Fire Protection District. Item C, village-wide sign replacement purchase, goods only. Item D, Public Works spoils contract amendment, contract change order. Item E, 143rd Street, Will Cook Road to Wolf Road Land Acquisition Services Contract Amendment. Item F, Orland Park Health and Fitness Center Management Services.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve items A through F of the consent agenda.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict on item E.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve items A through D and F of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll on items A through D and F of the consent agenda.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
143rd Street, Will Cook Road to Wolf Road Land Acquisition Services Contract Amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve amending the existing Christopher B. Burke Limited Phase II Design Engineering Contract for the 143rd Street, Will Cook Road to Wolf Road Road Widening Project to add an amount not to exceed $36,250 for land acquisition services.
Second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I abstain. I have a business relationship with one of the vendors.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
HP Large Format Scanner and Printer Purchase.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the purchase of three large HP format scanner plotter devices from Conica Minolta using Sourcewell Contract Number 030321-KON for an amount not to exceed
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
A&E Services for Village Hall Security Upgrade Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon. Move to approve the proposal from Williams Architects for A&E Services for the Village Hall Security Upgrade Project for a total amount not to exceed $60,503.10, $57,622, plus a 5% contingency for $2,881.10, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to attorney review, and allow the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Steinhafels Incorporated Inducement Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Raschowski.
I move to approve a strategic backfill incentive program inducement agreement with Steinhafels Incorporated as outlined above and to be incorporated into their final development agreement pending approval of the zoning, special use, and building permits.
Second.
Before we vote on this, I do want to comment on this. This is a great project coming. We really welcome Steinhafels to the Village of Orland Park, and they're taking two large vacancies and combining them into one, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Steinmark over in Orland Park Place. So that's really important for the village. Obviously, these large spaces get very, very challenging to fill. So we do, some time ago, we passed an incentive agreement, which you guys are, which the villages' residents are all familiar with, where we share sales tax. We think it's particularly important for these large spaces that we do that, to entice businesses to come, because, let's face it, the pool of companies that can actually move into these spaces, since most of them are already here, are very, very small. So we're excited to have you come here on behalf of the village. You know, we basically, we're the auto row for the state. Now we're going to be the furniture row for the state, which I think is fantastic. And if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself to the board, we'd really appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I'm going to introduce the representatives from Steinhafels here. Fred Schweinert, he's the Vice President for Stores. He'll come up and speak a little bit. But we also have Chad Durn, Director of Marketing, Chad. And then we have John Haas, he's VP for Operations. And we have Andrew Steinhafels. He's the President of Steinhafels Furniture.
Good evening and thank you for having us. So Steinhafels is extremely excited about this opportunity. We've been in business since 1934 as a family-run business. We're on our fourth generation, and approximately two years ago, we announced that we transferred to ESOP, so an employee-owned company, which I think is a great value for all of our associates and for the customers' experience. We're welcome. We're excited about Furniture Row. Tomorrow, as we announce what Steinhafels is embarking upon, we are adding a distribution center in Bowling Brook, which with the marriage of the Orland Park location, we believe that this is going to be pretty much strong news in the furniture industry. We represent a company that has very strong values, I believe. We operate on consistency, humility, improvement, passion, dedication, and humility, and also financial prudence and integrity. So I think that our company with the match with Orland Park is going to be absolutely the right match for us. So we're extremely excited. I can't say, Mayor, I appreciate how open you've been to all the discussions. Our expansion itself, it's over 90,000 square feet, and it's over $8.6 million investment into the building. So we're extremely excited, and I can't say enough about how welcoming we feel that Orland Park has been to us.
Well, thank you very much. We welcome you here. Does the board have any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just want to say what an outstanding store you have, and we so look forward to you in Orland Park. We have a lot of people buying and selling houses in the area and looking to update, so I think you're going to be very, very successful in Orland Park. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate those kind words.
Any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Raschowski.
So I second what Cindy said, and I wanted to thank you for coming, and I like the backfill idea, and I'm glad that that's working out for you. So I'm excited to see the store. So welcome, and, you know, best wishes to you.
Any others?
Thank you again, and thank you for coming tonight, and we look forward to seeing you open. I know it's going to be about a year. Approximately a year. We're looking at early 2024, and I think we're going to bring a lot to the marketplace. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Rainbow Cone with Drive-Thru, 157-111 Harlem Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve a special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-thru, Rainbow Cone at 157-111 Harlem Avenue. Subject conditions in the Board of Trustees Recommended Action for Case 2022-0107, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Granting a Special Use for a Restaurant with Outdoor Seating and a Drive-In Service Window with Modifications. Rainbow Cone, 157-111 South Harlem Avenue.
Second.
I want to go ahead with the presentation.
Just a real quick, the person who's going to be presenting for Rainbow Cone speaks. I just want to make one correction to the Board of Trustees Recommended Action. We accidentally, under the landscaping plan listed both pages with the same date, and the second date should be October 12, 2022. So I'd just like to amend the Board of Trustees Recommended Action. So for the landscaping plan for Rainbow Cone last revised...
You can't amend the recommended action, so could you write it down so that one of our board members can make the amendment, please?
That's fine. I'll just pass this right over. Thanks.
Give it to me. So I entertain amendment to the recommended action to revise, to change the last revised date from July 20, 2022, and July 20, 22, to July 20, 22, and October 12, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eric Peterson. I'm the VP of Predevelopment for Keystone Planning and Design. Our address is 418 Clinton Place in River Forest. We are excited to be bringing Rainbow Cone to the old vacant Baker Square Building located at 15711 South Harlem. If you go onto the next slide, we are removing 1,550 square feet of the north part of the building to have enough space to fit the drive-through. We'll be redoing the main entrance into the building, as well as replacing all the windows and putting in a new patio out front. There's multiple pictures. Picture says 1,000 words after this, but if you could go through those and then jump down to the site plan. If there's any questions, we can come back to any of these pictures, so just wanted everyone to see what we're proposing. Right there is perfect. As you can see, we are wrapping the entire building with the drive-through lane. This provides us 22 queue spaces within the drive-through lane, as well as an additional nine spaces prior to any car backing up onto South 71st Court there on the east. There'd be 39 parking spaces remaining, and then the last slide shows the landscape plan that we worked closely with staff on. We are providing above-code landscape around the drive-through area, and there will be a rainbow of plantings throughout that area. Want to thank everyone for getting us to this point. Staff's been great to work with, and if you guys have any questions, would be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Trustee Katsinas.
So a quick question. How many other stores do you have? Just the one on Western? Or is there other Rainbow Cone stores? Very standing.
There's one under construction right now of El Perizo. We're working on multiple others. One of their representatives is on his way here. He could, if he gets here in a couple of minutes, could answer that. But I want to say there's more that are open, just unfortunately, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Trustee Reardon.
Yeah, I'd just comment, I lived two blocks away from the one on Western for about 10 years, and this is fantastic that they're coming to Orland Park. I think it's a great brand. You know, my kids, my kids will be very excited to be able to not have to go back there to visit the Rainbow Cone, so just very happy you're coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Welcome. It's a great addition, another great addition, and I especially like, you know, sometimes, sometimes we forget. I think everyone forgets about that Harlem part of Orland Park, and because it's, you know, for most of the people who live in Orland, they're not going that direction very often. So I think it's great to have things that are there to give people a reason to go to that side of town, which is still a very important part of Orland Park, so.
What timing? Is it, what was the timing? Sorry.
We want to get open as soon as possible, trying to get open before summer during, you know, the busy time of year, so.
Great. Great. Call the roll on the amended motion.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
I just want to note for Dennis. Dennis, can we have our children back now? He's a big fan of Rainbow Coans, and he's made it known multiple times. So the next two...
I asked the question when it's going to open.
The next two items on the agenda are going to be pushed to the next agenda, but I still want to talk about them a little bit, so, because Silver Cross wants some minor modifications to their plan, but Silver Cross is expecting to build a 65,000-square-foot building, correct? Real quick, 65,000 square feet? 42,000 with another one to follow?
Potentially, yeah. There's room for additional expansion, so they're only going to be developing part of the lot at this time.
Right. And, well, we don't even need to postpone it, right, because we haven't called it yet, so, because there's going to be changes. So we're not even going to call this one because there will be changes to the amendment, so. But just wanted to let you know that we are going to be approving a Silver Cross medical facility, I believe, at 171st and La Grange in front of Orland Ridge, which was the whole idea of that development to begin with, because it's a senior-targeted. There's a lot of misinformation about that particular project. I think the rents in that particular project are over $3,000 a month. It's senior-targeted, and that's why you see villas and a clubhouse, and so that whole idea was to create a community that they could kind of take part in this medical facility. Well, obviously, and this is one of the things that drew Silver Cross to that area was, were those residences, so it's going to be a very important part. And the other thing that's critical about this is that this is a partnership with for-profit entities, so it is a fully taxable. It's on the tax rolls, it's on the tax rolls for the school districts and everything, and there's a lot of misinformation about there about, you know, that there's no taxes being paid, and all of that stuff is taxed. It all goes to your school district, so it actually helps lower your taxes for those of you who live in, I think it's District 140, over there. Those of you who live in that district, you're actually benefiting because now you're going to have other properties on your tax rolls besides just your homes. So it's a very good thing for that, for that area. So, another exciting development in Orland Park.
Hoster Cabin Repair.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to waive the bidding requirements and approve awarding a contract to a new contractor's per quote number 1286 to restore the exterior of the Jacob Hoster Cabin in an amount not to exceed $29,767, plus a 7% contingency for a total amount of $31,850, and to authorize the village manager to enter into a contract with a new contractor, subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So I'd just like to hear from staff. I just would like an understanding in terms of the sense of urgency on this. I know we're waiving a bid on this. It's not a large amount of money, but, you know, part of this is, these buildings are replicas, right? They're not historic themselves, so is there, is there anything in the consideration that we're looking for historical preservation contractors when perhaps we might be able to open that up to other contractors rather than to go that route?
That's a great point. We did look for historical preservation contractors and not necessarily a regular contractor. Probably the unique part of this is the chinking, which you would think is like mortar, but we didn't have anybody even appeal to that part of it. We had trouble getting any kind of responses, to be honest, so we reached out to preservationists. We didn't reach out to a regular contractor, so we could do that if that were preferred. You're right, they are replicas. The logs are in bad shape. Both of the cabins are in bad shape, so the first goal is to restore the exterior, so we can make the interior viewable for tours and such.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I'd just like to comment that three and a half years ago, when we came on the board, we didn't have the Humphrey House, we didn't have these cabins, and they've been, with the demise of the Historical Society, they've been dumped in our laps, and they're, it's expensive to restore that Humphrey House to its condition, and, you know, I was just surprised that, you know, darn it, here's another, here's $30,000 we should, you know, that we have to spend on that. But I want to, you know, thank the board and the community for even considering this investment in the history. I mean, it's a, there's a lot of money that, you know, we weren't planning on spending years ago, but now it seems like it's right here, you have to do it, and good wise management, so I'm all for doing this, and, but I think there is a thank you by heart of us history people, which I know we all are, down, way down deep, but that it's, we're all thankful for it. Thank you.
So we know the bill might have lived in these houses or something, just quite like it, but...
No, they're replicas.
I understand. They're replicas. So to Trustee Compass's point, when are we planning on doing this work?
With the board's approval, we could award the contract this fall. It just depends on the contractor. So we hope to still do it this fall. If he couldn't get in there by this fall, then we would roll, roll that budget, do it in the spring.
And I'm just, I'm just spitballing here that, that if it doesn't require a historical restoration contractor, because they are, like you said, they're replicas, you know, I know it's not a large amount of money, but still, you know, we saved 10 grand, that's 10 grand you could put into the interiors or what have you. I don't know what the rest of the board, how the rest of the board feels about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So just as a point of order, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to push it back, to look for those contractors. I just, I, to Trustee Healy's point, we've just taken on the John Humphrey House. It's a lot of cost. So what would be the proper procedure here? Do we, do we push the committee, or do we?
We can table it.
All right, so then I move to table this motion.
Second.
Any comments on tabling it? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye. So, yeah, we know it's not a lot of money, but why don't we just take a look and see if we, if there's some contractors out there that we can take a look at, potentially getting some quotes on this, and, and see what they say, and bring it back.
Among Title VII, Chapter IV, Number of Class A Liquor License Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter IV of the Orland Park Municipal Code regarding the available number of Class A liquor licenses issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cookinwill County, Illinois.
Second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Raschowski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye. And then also in the mayor's report, I do have some commentary, because we've seen some more stuff this weekend, you know, that is unsettling a little bit. But I want to remind people, Election Day, November 8. Early voting starts October 24. Here, the common area for here is Orland Township, so that's when early voting starts. You know, I've been observing, obviously, from both internally and externally, I've been observing a lot of what's been going on, and, you know, there's one subject that's been blatantly lied about, and I've seen commercials against state reps, state senators, US congressmen, US senators, governor, attorney general, secretary of state, and, and even Supreme Court justices, all on the same subject, and they're blatant lies. And there's no recourse for that, which is unfortunate. But I think it's important for voters to realize they need to pay attention to that, and they need to, when they see these things, they need to do a little bit of research, take a little bit of time and do some research, and just don't buy those, those, especially when you see the same one against nine different people. I mean, you really think that everybody is 100% in lockstep on an issue that's not even really the issue that people are all that concerned about from a voting perspective. So please, take your time to do a little research. We, there's a lot of information out there. So, you know, be an educated voter, I guess is what I'm saying. It's frustrating for me to watch as a candidate, because it's, I know personally, and I know the people here on this board personally, it's very frustrating to be lied about and, and be defamed, really. And there's a lot of people that that's happening to right now, so I feel for them. So, so do yourself a favor and look at that. So everyone on this board, I think with the exception of Joni, lucky her, somehow she's, she's escaped this, have had pretty significant personal attacks and lies about them, other businesses and other things, and have tried to damage them in a personal or professional way, which is really unfortunate for people who are really giving their time to their community, and I can tell you, are just a great group of people that are here serving the community. And, you know, I had a story relayed to me today that I, I just, I have to share it, sorry, I have to share it. It's a, so somebody doesn't like me, can't stand me, because I have, I have three daughters and a son, and I only allowed my son to go to college. And how many daughters do I have, everybody?
Two.
I have two. How many of them have gone to college? One. Yeah, so one decided not to. So my son went to college, my daughter went to college. My daughter is currently in grad school, interestingly enough, but, but the whole position was is that, I believe that only men can go to college. It's the most absurd thing I've ever heard. My wife had no college whatsoever when I met her. My wife had no college whatsoever when I met her. So, while I was working, she went to college and went and got her master's, which we paid for. So, you know, so my daughter, and my oldest, it just wasn't for her, but she's, there's still money set aside for her that will then go to my granddaughter. So, that's the kind of stuff, and literally, this person has animosity towards me. And that's just going on for the entire, the entire board. So, it's really, you know, it's really unsettling. And, you know, when you see these mailers with sources, I've seen some of those too, and I've gone to try and find the source, and you can't even find them. So, they, when they're making up the source. So, everyone here serves the community because we want to make it better, and they give their time. And I'm telling you, you're talking about on this board, you're not going to find any skeletons here on this board. I mean, none. And look at the stuff we've been just raked over the coals with. It's just, whether you'll agree with our policies or not, that's just really unacceptable. You know, and it, and it stops people from running, which is really bad, because we lose the, we, we lose the benefit of having really talented people that don't get involved because of all these lies and personal attacks that stop people from serving. It really is time for voters to say enough, right? Spend a little time, research these things, because if someone will say anything, blatant lies to get into office, what will they do when they get there? Think about that. I mean, we already have a candidate without opposition in Orland Park who's under indictment federally, right? So, think about the types of things that you get here. A nearby town elected a mayor who was under indictment that then had to resign. He was under indictment, he was elected. Then he had to resign because he went to jail. Okay? Let's think about who we're electing to office. And, you know, that brings me to, you know, so two things. One thing that we had a big discussion about, it's a police-related matter, and we're in the police station here, is the Safety Act. I was asked repeatedly, will this go into effect? Yes, it's a law. And you have a lot of people promising that they're going to change it, do this, do that, do this. They've had two years to change it. So, you, I guess you have to suspend belief to believe that they're going to change it after being reelected, knowing that they passed it, and people are upset that they passed it, that they're going to change it when they're already in office, because they could change it, they could have changed it now, and they haven't. So, when there's no more threat to be unelected, you think they're actually going to do anything. And that brings me to one more thing that we have going on that you should know about. So, we have executive order last week, I think Friday, yeah, October 14th, they always come out on a Friday. COVID-19 Executive Order Number 113. Okay? I mean, you can't even make that up, number 113. This is not being reported. All individuals, including those who are fully vaccinated, are recommended to wear a face covering consistent with CDC guidance. Now, we're back to face masks again. Now, there's a reason why it wasn't mandated, because there's an election. Think about that. Because if he's, if there's willing to be executive orders, which only have 30 days of power, and it's been going on now for, let's see, 2020, March till now, so it's been going on for two and a half years, over two and a half years of executive orders, there's two problems with that. One is, do you think that person's not going to have any problem mandating things on you again? And secondly, I think the bigger problem is, where has been the legislature for this entire time? Because it's their job to provide a check and balance and not let someone do this. 113 executive orders. This board would not let that happen. I know that for a fact. So, think about that, that you're electing people that are allowing this to happen. So, think about that, okay? Everybody when they go to the polls. I just think that's important. So, be an informed voter, I guess, is my, do research and, and think about how you're voting and the impact it's going to have. So, that's all I have for my mayor's report.
Lean Office Training Development Services. Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katzinas.
I move to recommend to the village board to approve a proposal from Lean Enterprises Institute, Inc., for lean office training in an amount not to exceed $33,000, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to the village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
No disagreements on the overall direction of this, you know, definitely in strong support of getting our processes more optimized and documented and making sure that we're finding efficiencies. I think the question I have on this one, given that it impacts Development Services, I know that we're going through some changes there. We want to make sure that we have a full complement. So, I guess my question is, if we're starting this in October, are we losing any of the benefit of that because we don't have that department fully staffed?
We're at, we're at a level now where, that's a very good point. We held off until we can get some of the key players in there, and they're in there now, they're, they're feeling comfortable, and we're going to focus now on the permitting side. So, the, anybody that we need relative to permitting is in place, and we can start this right now. This is going to coincide with what we're doing as far as our Tyler upgrades. There's the community development portion of Tyler upgrades. So, this element is actually going to assist in that as well. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to capture bad processes and memorialize them into our new ERP software. So, this is a very exciting project. I think our, to answer your question, our, the folks that we need are in place right now.
Good. Thank you, George.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
I'm just curious, is there a reason why we're doing this tonight and eventually bringing in a budget, budget adjustment for '22 when we're right in the middle of budget season for 2023? I mean, is this something that we could actually put into the budget for next year, move it into next year? Because I think we have so much training going on with the leadership program and everything else that we're trying to spin up. Is this, is this going to be too much for some people to, to be involved with? And I guess, I just, I just feel like it's a lot from what we've been doing with training, and just doesn't make sense as far as the timing unless there's a key benefit that we're going to get out of this within the next three months.
It's, it's more than three months. It's, this is going to be going on through March, and I just, so we're going through the, the new software program for that. And so, this is going to coincide with that. It's going to help us make sure that what we're doing with that, we're not memorializing bad practice. So, that is the timing element of it.
Right. So, then, okay, hindsight then, this probably should have been part of the ERP process of implementation, mapping our processes prior to implementation.
So, there is some of that as part of our contract for ERP implementation. This is going to go much deeper than that. What we, you know, as far as our Development Services, we do, there is a lot of room for improvement, and we want to incorporate those improvements as soon as possible so that when we do wrap up the ERP element of it, it's already part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
This looks really similar to like a lean Six Sigma kind of training. Is that what it is?
Yeah. So, this is, so there's lean and there's Six Sigma. This is, this is lean. Six Sigma is more on the manufacturing side, right? If you're making plane parts, you want to make sure that your, your part does not fail. What this is doing is, it, this is going to help us map our processes, and then what it does is it helps you eliminate non-value-added elements. So, there's no point in making something more efficient if it shouldn't exist in the first place.
Right.
And so, this is the kind of stuff that we're going to be looking at. It's a unique way we're going to do this. We, Lean Enterprise Institute, which was created by the gentleman that actually coined the term lean manufacturing, he is going, that group is going to actually coach our folks, and it's going to be a every-other-week process. So, he's going to come in one day, going to coach some of the folks, they're going to get homework, and over the next two weeks, they're going to do that homework, then they comes back and they're going to coach some more. The nice part about that is, at the end of this project, now we have some real-world, experienced, trained people in our Development Services Department, and that's the mentality that's going to be going from now on.
So, we'll reduce redundancies.
Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Maloney.
So, the homework that you mentioned, is this going to be based on real-world business process, or is this going to be?
It's, that's exactly what it's based on.
Okay.
So, there, so the folks that we're going to assign to this, their homework is actually going to be what we are doing. It's not, there's no theoretical. There is no, and, you know, when, when some people get belts, right, yellow belts and black belts and all this other stuff, they'll, they'll do a project that may be theoretical. LEI, Lean, and the group that we're going to be using, LEI, they only do it for real-world stuff.
No, we're quite familiar here in Orland Park with people doing belt projects that don't.
Yeah, I don't ever want to hear a word belt project.
We don't need another belt project.
So, I walked in here to all these belt projects, and my response when I sat down with the groups were, I said, you know, all of these belt projects are great and theoretical and all of this other stuff, but, you know, why don't we start with this? If you want to fix bad things, stop doing stupid stuff that you know is stupid. And I know some of you are chuckling because you actually heard that, that speech. I may have said it a little differently, but that's really what you need to do. And continuous improvement is continuous improvement. This, but this is important. I think we definitely have an issue there, that we definitely need to map that out.
As far as the belts, I'm just going to, I'm just going to echo what Mr. Miyagi said, Kmart. Right now.
998.
Any other comments? Call or roll.
Trustee Katzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye. You know, Joni, just because you're here, all the levity has shown up. Before that, we were just nothing but serious all the time.
Amending Village Code Commission's Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter VIII of the Orland Park Village Code regarding the Veterans Commission.
Second.
Call or roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Village Hall Department Furniture.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Move to approve the proposal for Midwest Office Interiors of Woodridge, Illinois, through Omnia Contracts R191804 for a total amount not to exceed $27,137.23, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to attorney, village attorney review.
Second.
I have a question here, George. Village manager's office, is that your office getting new furniture?
Gold-plated? No.
Have you seen his furniture?
It's on the, it's on the floor. So, I'm not getting any furniture.
The reason I was asking is because a previous village manager spent way more than this to put furniture just in that office, and I couldn't stop it. So, I mean, a lot. So.
No, the stuff I have is, is the best IKEA has to offer.
So, okay, and I, I understand we're trying to now stay consistent with all of our furniture so that we can move it all throughout the village.
So, all of the furniture purchases from now on will be coming through the village manager's office, specifically Marissa and we.
So, that you get the newest stuff every time?
Yeah. One for me, one for you. The, and we're going to uniform all of the furniture. That means if we ever do change offices, or if we ever change anything, it's all interchangeable. We don't have to start from scratch.
Okay, great. And for the stuff that we're replacing, are we finding a home for that?
Stuff that we're replacing is very, very bad.
Is it like the old 1989 leopard skin or leopard print seat, chairs?
If this is, this is World War II surplus. I mean, it's, it's very hardy furniture, but it's not the.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
I know some landscape businesses that might take it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I can't help but notice that you put this on the agenda when we have four furniture experts sitting.
Yeah. Any other comments? Call or roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.
Are there any non-scheduled citizens or visitors?
Couldn't find the place.
Four comments?
Four comments. We'll let you start off, Trustee Radiszewski.
Oh, yay. Well, again, I want to say welcome to Steinoffels. We're glad to have you, and it's nice to hear and to see an employee own and operate a business coming here to Orland Park. Thank you for that. And it's, like, again, it's just a pleasure to, to hear. We talked a little bit about the museum, and I want to mention that we're lucky, Orland Park is lucky to have a history museum, because a lot of towns don't. I mean, you have neighbor settlement, but, I mean, I can't think of too many other neighboring towns that, that have their own history museum, and we do. And it's, it's fabulous. I've gone to two events recently, they're painting events, and I'm not very good at it, I admit. I learned how to paint and watercolors, not that good, but it was fun. So, they, they are doing some fun events. Thank you, Ray, for putting some of those events together. There's some other upcoming events. I know that there's, I think, a Civil War reenactment at Stellwagen Farm coming up this weekend, and then I wrote down a Killer Among Us. So, like, another event, kind of, you know, I guess spooky, kind of scary, you know, just Halloween, given the season. But they're really doing some really great events, and Sarah, the curator there, is just so knowledgeable, I mean, way beyond her years. I mean, just having a conversation with her, just going there and painting, but just learning so much about the, the history of Orland Park and just seeing just the different old artifacts and, and things that, that she's done. And I think they do a really great job for preserving all of that. We're lucky to have it, and I think people should check it out.
Trustee Reardon.
For salt, thank, it's good to see you, Joni. Glad you're back.
Thank you.
You're looking great.
Good to be back.
So, yeah, it's fantastic to see you here, I'm very happy. Also, I think it's a great time to be in Orland Park, listening to tonight's presentations and the discussions we just had, I know Bill's a little, you know, asked some questions about where we're spending all our money, but I think the money is very well-spent. We got three major projects going on over the next year, you got the sports, you know, renovations at Schusler Park, that, you know, attracts a certain section of Orland Park. You have the Centennial West, the concert, that's a whole nother section of Orland Park that, you know, is, is providing, you know, entertainment services for them. And then you got the Triangle, that's still on its way, that's a whole nother, you know, section of Orland Park. These are great things that we've done. I think that, you know, previous boards as well, but, but also the boards here before us have, you know, had this in the planning for a long time, which allows us to do that. Our finances are such that we can do those types of things. And then you listen to the new businesses that are coming into town. Again, we have these inducement agreements, there's towns that couldn't afford to do that, they couldn't afford to share the revenue, they got to, you know, some sort of business comes in there, they can't have those kind of incentives, but we do, because we plan properly, we've, you know, cut where we needed to and, and, and put money where we need to put it, to, you know, get great businesses to come into Orland Park. So, you know, I thought that was, that was a, was a very productive and positive development throughout the, the presentations there. And then the last thing about the health and fitness, that's just another added, you know, it's a great presentation, I, I think the history of it was, was well-laid out, what we spent before, what we're trying to do, and what we're trying to accomplish, and again, talk about what towns have, you know, something like that, you know, 4,000-member health and fitness center right in their town that we're, you know, continuing to improve, so a lot of good stuff going on in Orland Park, be positive. Thanks.
Trustee Compass.
So, I'm going to start by saying, I didn't have any comments the last time, so.
Oh, boy.
No, just kidding.
Oh, wait, hold on, do we need to recess?
No, I just want to say, welcome back, Trustee Radiszewski, it's great to see you in person here and not hear you as a, as a tinny voice echoing amongst the, the rafters of the village hall. I also like to say, you know, how outstanding is it that, given all that's going on in our economy right now, we were able to welcome two businesses today into Orland Park, and two great businesses, family-owned and family-driven, community-value-driven, it's just, it's, it's outstanding. I think, I'm looking forward both to Steinhafels moving in, Rainbow Cone, I know there's 100 years, I think, of history within the Chicagoland area for that organization as well, so just really uplifting, despite all the things that we're seeing going on with the economy around us. And then lastly, I asked Director Hoda if he had anyone he'd like to recognize out of the, the engineering department, and he gave me two names. So, I'd like to give my thanks to Diana Porcelli, our office support supervisor. Diana has demonstrated excellence in leading and monitoring contract execution with contractors. After contractor selection, Diana shepherds it through the village's approval process, which includes coordinating with department directors, VMO, villages' risk managers, and attorneys, I suspect some of our lean operations are probably going to be looking at this as well. Diana has also taken a key role in processing the engineering department's budget into the new ERP system with input from the director, engineering staff, and finance department. The second name is Scott Lukin, a senior engineer. Scott joined the engineering department over a year ago, and we brought engineering reviews completely in-house. Scott learned our process quickly and has been a highly productive member of the engineering team. He proactively takes on new initiatives, and most recently took charge of, in light of what we're talking about today, Bulley Farms, Stellwagen Farm, and Humphrey House Historic Preservation Projects. So, I've heard he's made significant progress on all of those, and I look forward to hearing the update on those programs in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Katsinas.
Thank you. I, too, want to say welcome back, Jo, Joni, Trustee Radiszewski. It's incredible the strides you've made since June, and I am so happy to see you again. You're not going to tear up, and I also want to say thank you to Paul. You know, Paul's been with Joni, her companion, he's really looked out for her, and so, from all of us, thank you, Paul. But on a more serious note, just wanted to say, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Anyone can be a victim of domestic violence. One out of four women experience domestic violence, and one out of 15 children are exposed to domestic, this kind of violence. If you or anyone you know is a victim of such abuse, help is available. Locally, we are very fortunate to have the Crisis Center of South Suburbia, they have a 24-hour domestic violence hotline, that number is 708-429-7233. Again, 708-429-7233. The Crisis Center offers services such as outreach, prevention, housing, in addition to victim services. The state of Illinois also has a hotline, that is 1-877-863-6339. Both of these agencies and numbers help victims at no charge, and it is completely confidential. So, if you could please spread the word, thank you.
Trustee Malani.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the citizens who joined us here at the Orland Park Police Department this weekend for the Citizens Police Academy, where they learned about the technology, the tactics, and the equipment that our officers use to keep Orland Park safe. Appreciate everybody that attended, hope they learned something from it, and it was a great, great, great turnout as well, so thank you to those people. Also want to let everybody know that the DEA's National Prescription Drug Takeback Day event will take place at the Orland Park Police Station from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 29th, so please stop by and drop off any unneeded prescription medication during this event. I would also like to welcome back Trustee Radiszewski, it's great to have her back, and also welcoming Rainbow Cone and Steinhafels to, to Orland Park as well, we, we appreciate you guys looking to make Orland Park your home. I'm also looking for a new choice for furniture, so this is perfect. So, you know, thank you all for coming, and have a great night.
Trustee Healy.
Earlier tonight.
It's kind of scary, by the way, that I'm, I'm letting Trustee Healy go last, because I got to follow him.
I'm getting older, waiting for everybody to speak. Earlier to see earlier during the mayor's report, you know, well, I threw away my prepared comments, I'll do this one, earlier during, during the mayor's report, the mayor made some kind comments about our, regarding our, on the, on the board here, enduring some pretty stupid attacks about our family and that, as members of the board here. It's only, one should realize that these attacks are, are not about us, they're about, as the mayor was right, intimidating people from getting involved in the, the process, you take a different look at them. I think they're kind of hilarious at sometimes, but they come from all directions, and they're certainly, you know, not made by good people, so. The, running for office has been a really, you know, I, if I handed it all over to do it again, I'd do it in a heartbeat. I've met some wonderful people here along the way, and I just look out at the staff here, you know, from all you guys, it's just, you look at your work performance and that, and you're going, wow, these guys are really, really good professionals at what they do. It's just, it's just, you know, from, you know, I'm not in it, you know, knee-deep like everybody else, but boy, it's very impressive. I've seen a lot of businesses and that, but the, the attitudes here have just been, have been great, and I, I really like them, and we'll see if Bill Durk, huh, what kind of improvement he's going to make on it, but we'll see about that. But even here on the board, there is, it just, just seeing the, as we grow into our, our roles as trustees, just what great personalities and what great knowledge these people have to do, and I've learned so much about some business and just some values and that, it's just, I, I would have to recommend it to everybody to try and get involved, run for office and, and do something, it doesn't matter what, what side of the aisle you're on, but get involved, don't just sit there, but just get involved and, and do something about making your country and village better. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. So, the comments that were made tonight, it adds to my, my closing comments, so, Domestic Violence Month, I think it's also very critical to note something that we've talked about a lot, Safety Act. Those people that commit that violence will be set free. Judges will not be able to hold them, except under the very nearest of circumstances, so really critical that we understand that, and we, we factor that in to, to our thought processes in the next few weeks. To Bill's point about running for office, I, you know, I've met so many great people, both as a mayor, obviously, I've, I've met so many people in town that, you know, and so many things that go on in town that I didn't even know, and I was a pretty engaged individual, so it's, it's fantastic. I can tell you, running for office currently, the people that I've met nationally that are stepping up, that, frankly, they don't have to do this, they don't have to put their hat in the ring, they can just go happily with life, and they've got very successful careers, and it's a lot they put their family through to do this, so hats off to all those people that throw their hat in the ring and do it for the right reasons, and do it to, to serve their communities, to serve their states, to, to serve their country. I will tell you, you know, we, we had a lot of good news tonight, but, you know, I step back to when I first became mayor, I was eight months into my term, when in the same month, we lost Carson's, Carson's Home Goods Sears, Toys R Us, and Babies R Us, in the same month. Welcome to being mayor. And then, not two years later, almost to the day, COVID, and we have that. Now, we've got inflation we haven't seen in 40 years. Boy, it's been a fun five and a half years, I tell you. But you think about that, and you think, boy, everything but the Sears location has got something going in it or being completed, right? The Sears had something, but we lost it for COVID, but there's still opportunities there. And, and then tonight, you see, you know, Steinhafels is coming, you know, we know we have Peach Fresh Market filling in our advanced store, we talked about Silver Cross coming and filling that, that area over there, we talked about Rainbow Cone filling an area in, in Harlem that hasn't been filled in a long time, right? So, we, we talk about, you know, BJ's.
Tesla?
BJ's Brew, I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
So, he's busy talking. BJ's Brew House, that's just about finished. Chuck Lager, we have a grand opening next week, and that building looks fantastic from the outside. We have Tesla coming as well. I mean, all of these things that are coming to Orland Park, oh, and something I didn't mention, PGA Superstore has submitted a permit, for a permit one and a half million-dollar upgrade going into the Daniel location, and so many others that we can't talk about yet because the deals aren't complete yet. And that's happening in Orland Park after losing five basically major anchors, and then where Steinhafels is going, also Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Stein Mart as well. So, we lost all of that in a very short order, we've gone through COVID, we're in horrible inflation which is causing issues everywhere, and look at what's still coming to Orland Park, it just speaks volumes to what a great community is. And, you know, frankly, although it's been a challenge, you know, I'm so, I'm, I'm blessed to have been here at that time, I'm blessed to have all of this, all of the trustees that are here to, to help do this, because without them, this doesn't happen, they've had, they had to vote for all these policies that made this happen. Blessed to have a staff that's as great as it is in Georgia, doing a great job as village manager, and our staff is doing a wonderful job, and, oh, by the way, what people don't even, we haven't even factored in here, is a third of our workforce retired during COVID, due to our early retirement program, a third, think about that, every number, just about every number one and almost every number two in every department, I think the only number two that's still here is Ray, the only other one that was here was Chief Mitchell. And everybody else, it was, we lost at least the ones and twos in every department, that's a huge leadership challenge, and yet we've been able to navigate through it. So, it's just, I mean, I grew up here, so I'm biased a little bit, because I was born and raised here, but, and I raised my kids here, but it's just, it's a wonderful community, and I think we're an example for other communities in the state and in the country about how to be run, and how you can have a vibrant and great community, even in, even in a, surrounded by a fair amount of turmoil, whether it's county or state. So, so again, I'm very proud to, to be, to be mayor, and I think, you know, Orland Park's a wonderful community, and tonight's just a perfect example of all of the good news that we had tonight. And I didn't even mention the park projects that Trustee Reardon mentioned, you know, Schusler Park, which was built, for those of you who don't know, by volunteers before I was even born. My dad would tell the story about donated sod, donated fencing, and volunteers going out over a couple of weekends and laying that sod, laying the fencing and building it, so you wonder why there's some issues with drainage and things like that. Well, guess what? It was a bunch of volunteers in town, just taking a piece of land that was donated by the Schusler family, and boom, and there you go, you have parks that, that's been there for 60 years, so, and we're redoing that. And Centennial Park West, which was, you know, 1993 when Centennial Park was built, and then Centennial Park West about 10 years after that, now we're expanding that into something that should be, so just amazing things, Triangle's still coming, and even Orland Park Health and Fitness, you know, so we get it, we turn to a silk purse out of a sow's ear, I mean, we really made something good out of it, that's a really benefit for the community for something that was a really big challenge, and it's because Orland Park is so strong, we're able to do that. So, again, it just, a, a wonderful night just identifies what a great community that we live in, and we should all be proud to live here and, and thank this board for all the hard work that they do, and for our staff for everything that they do. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, and B, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performances, or dismissal of specific village employees.
Second.
Call the roll.